Welcome to board meeting for East Greenberg Central School District, Route 86. Call a meeting to order, 7:00 PM. Tonight's meeting, board members are present in person, except for your expert and his youth will not be here this evening. And with that, please rise and join with the pledge of allegiance.
I'm speaking to the board of the United States of America, District Republic, for which it stands on my mission, my command, and this is what we're doing to address this problem.
Thank you, everyone. So our first order of business is to hear from our student council from Columbia High School. We have Katie and Ryan from Columbia High School. And I'm Trudy. Good to see you.
Good evening. So today, we had a meeting after school to discuss our class and student council elections for the 2021-22 school year. And it looks like we're going to have a lot of people running for positions, way more than this year, for next year, which is great, because they'll definitely be a busy one getting back to our normal events and traditions. So the official election will be two weeks from today, and then we will have the results to share with everyone.
Today, we discussed our final arrangements for the Colombian awards ceremony. We will be recording the ceremony next Wednesday, June 2nd, and we have a group of junior seniors to be presenting for the virtual award show. The awards will then be given out to the winners in the following day. That's all we have.
Great. All right. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Katie. A great night. Welcome to stay on if you want, but I'm sure you have your homework.
Thank you.
Have a good one. Next order of business for the agenda is the approval of the draft minutes for the public hearing dated May 4th, 2021. Any revisions, comments on the minutes for the public hearing? Seeing none, any motion to approve those? Joanna and Second Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Next, we have the draft minutes for May 4th, regular meeting. Any comments or questions, revisions on the minutes? Seeing none, any motion to approve of that? John, Second, Mark, all those in favor? Approved. Well, the next thing on our item is the board forum. Just sort of public media, have changed the meeting format a little bit, so we're trying a little bit different agenda, kind of see how this one goes. Seems to go well last couple meetings. So with the board forum, I'd like to invite Jennifer, any comments at all? Michelle, anything? John? Good. Mark, David? Joanna? Great. You're good. I am good. I will observe any comments for the second public order, or second board forum later on as we get through our business tonight. And for the public forum, I will read the public content. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenberg Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs under operation in the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to such concerns in the public forum. If a response is appropriate, the president or superintendent will conduct a review of the air future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state to the record their name, address, or abilities in the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the business forum does not seem to be open forum. The board president will conduct formally early to vision operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered inflammatory or stigmatizing are prohibited. We declare that our board of all comments shall be limited. That's for our public comment, but we have our emails set up. And Linda, do we have any emails?
There are no public comments.
Okay. For our public, there is a second opportunity, as you hear the rest of the agenda, to submit the email comments to the board for reading. For the public forum, let me see. With that, I'll turn over to our superintendent for reports and presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Good evening, everybody. Welcome, members of the Board of Education, administrative team, and those members of the community who are participating in the live stream of our board meeting. Tonight, we have a special report. On an annual basis, representatives of the leadership team at Questar Three BOCs come to present to our Board of Education. We are one of 23 component districts within Questar, and we have a great relationship with the Questar BOCs, and we also have a number of programs and services for students that we participate in through Questar, as well as administrative services. So at this point, I'm going to introduce Questar Deputy Superintendent, Ari Aginoff, and the Chief Academic Officer, Anthony Tavie. Gladys Cruz could not be here tonight due to personal matter, so very good.
Thank you, dear. And I do want to send Gladys to her parents. Unfortunately, she had a death in the family, so she's not going to be able to be with us tonight. But first, we're going to start with instructional programs. So Anthony is going to talk a little bit about what's going on with Questar Three BOCs, and we have some very new... We have some new and exciting instructional programs that we're introducing, and then I'll follow.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Let's try to navigate my electronic devices here. Is it okay if I move my mouse?
Yeah, it's all fine.
One more second. Let me just start. Okay. I would like to extend my thanks to President Buno, Superintendent Simons, and the entire Board of Education Board welcoming us this evening to talk a little bit about Questar Three and R programs. Starting out, at the request of the Board of Education, we were asked to speak about the PTEC and Early College High School program that we are starting this fall in partnership with all of our component districts and Hudson Valley Community College. So just a little bit about PTEC and Early College High School. The models are part of an RFP that the state put out. We are members of Cohort Five for both PTEC and Early College High School, and the models permit students to complete their high school graduation requirements along with earning college credits and in the PTEC program, completing an associate's degree. When the RFP came out, we applied for initially the Early College High School grant, and then before we found out about Early College High School, we applied to the PTEC grant. We're very happy to find out that we were awarded both of these grants, which was both challenging and exciting. But the goal of both programs is to increase the high school graduation and post-secondary degree completion rates of those that are historically underrepresented at the post-secondary level. So some of the details of the programs. The Early College High School program is more of a traditional four-year program, and students earn between 24 and 60 college credits as part of that program. And in the PTEC program, students earn in excess of 60 college credits and an associate's, an AAS degree, an Associate of Applied Sciences. In both cases, both of these programs are offered, and college credits are at no cost to families. So one of the features of both programs is the workplace visits, the internships, and being first in line for job opportunities. We have four program pathways, which I'll talk about in depth a little bit later, but the first one is computer information systems and cybersecurity. Next, we have engineering technology focusing on civil engineering and architecture, environmental protections, and then finally, health sciences. So we are here in Redsler County, but the program serves all seven counties within both the Questar Three BOCs and Capital Region BOCs, for a total of 46 school districts. So we have both IHI, which is an Institute of Higher Education Partner, which is Hudson Valley Community College, and industry partners are very important to this program. We've identified two already with the Tech Valley Center for Ability, which have already been great partners in our development, and then also the Artificial Intelligence Center for Excellence, and then we mentioned Hudson Valley already. So both of the programs are going to be located on the Hudson Valley Community College campus. They've identified a building right there on the campus, which was their former Center for Advanced Manufacturing Building, the Lang Building. So we'll be the sole occupants of that building, and they're doing renovations to both the first and second floor in preparation for our arrival. So students earn as part of the program coursework, or college coursework, in conjunction with their high school coursework as early as ninth grade. In the case of ninth grade, students will be taking a college forum class, which permits them the ability to explore the program pathways and get acclimated to the college environment and the, some of the things that they will need to do in order to be successful at the college level. So what is the focus of these programs? And there's a lot that went into, a great deal of thought went into the development of the pathways. A lot of conversation amongst the steering committee to identify pathways that would be broad enough to attract a variety of students. So we've identified four pathways. There are three pathways within PTEC and two pathways within Early College High School. You'll notice that computer information systems is identified in both the PTEC and the Early College High School pathway, creating additional flexibilities for a student who knows they want to go on to college beyond their early college high school participation, and those that maybe want to enter directly into the workforce after completing their associate's degree. Environment, or engineering technology is a PTEC pathway, along with environmental protections focusing on clean energy management is the other, are the other two PTEC pathways. The second pathway, Early College High School, is health sciences, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, but the health sciences pathways, fields like, you know, respiratory therapy, radiotherapy technology, or dental hygiene, all of which have a great forecasted job growth. So when we think about identifying the pathways for these programs, forecasted job growth was a, was a huge factor in that. It really is pointless to have flexibility and a broad range of pathways if there isn't the prospect of gainful employment after they complete the program. So when we were identifying the pathways, we wanted to look for pathways that had a large percentage of job growth within the next six, four to six years. So first, web development forecasted to grow by 20% by 2028. Civil engineering technology forecasted to grow by 18% by 2026. And environmental, environmental science or environmental service technician forecasted to grow by 17% by 2026. And then health sciences has some of our largest forecasted job growth within the Capital Region, anywhere between 22 and 30% forecasted job growth. So definitely great opportunities for students as they complete the program. So the programs have a lot of similarities, and I just want to go through some of them with you. Both of the programs, like I said, are mentioned, are located at the Hudson Valley Community College campus, at no cost to families. They're available to students across our entire region. Our industry partners are vital in this, and while we've identified two already, we know that we have additional partners, and we have to identify each of the program pathways. Each of the programs are fully aligned with Hudson Valley Community College's AAS degrees. They are, as I mentioned, focused on in-demand jobs and career fields. The dual enrollment coursework begins no later, must by the grant, no later than 10th grade in our case, we're beginning in the ninth grade level with that one course. Students have the ability to articulate to more than 50 colleges through the partnership with Hudson Valley Community College. Workplace visits, internships, students being first in line for job opportunities are key features of both of the programs. And then courses taught by both high school faculty and college faculty. One of the things that we've talked about in our forums with parents and students is the location on the college campus, and that is something that is somewhat concerning. I know as a parent myself, I'd be a little bit worried about that. But one of the things we really work to ensure is to make sure that we have the separation on the college campus when we want it, but also the access when we need it to the coursework and the faculty and guest speakers, things like that. So by being in the Lang Building, we are in a, in our own environment, and students in the ninth or 10th grade level will stay in that building for all of their coursework. They will not be venturing out to a college, you know, sitting in a college class, not until they're 11th graders. So we felt that was very important. It's definitely something that we talked a lot about with the steering committee all throughout the planning process, is really trying to ensure that in those early years that we're doing everything in-house in that building and keeping our rising eighth graders in an environment that is, that is isolated from the rest of the college population. So key benefits, minimum of 24 college credits, and in the case of the PTEC program, in excess of 63 credits for some of the pathways. It combines the best elements of high school, college, and work-based learning all in one experience. It is a rigorous program, and we want to make sure that we are providing the proper supports for our students in order for them to be successful. They are going to be earning a number of college credits very early on in their high school career, and we need to make sure they're set up for success. There is a strong emphasis on project-based learning within both of the programs, and if you're not familiar with project-based learning, it's really experiential learning through doing projects, and not in addition to the coursework, but as part of the coursework. So you're immediately applying the different concepts and skills that you're learning in your subject areas into a project-based environment. We mentioned the work-based, work site visits and workplace learnings experiences. That's another advantage of being on the college campus, the access to the faculty to come into our building in the early years and for our students to experience some of those opportunities within the, within the college campus. So who is a successful student? We really, we really want to make sure that we're ensuring that, that it is more of a decision of the student in identifying whether or not these characteristics mesh with, with who they are as a student. We need, we need our students to be motivated to explore new and exciting ways to learn. We need students who are going to be able to, for one, that they're interested in the program pathways, and that they're able to succeed in a non-traditional classroom setting. As I mentioned, the project-based learning experience is different, and we want to make sure that students are, are acclimated to that so they can be successful. It is a highly collaborative environment in, in the program. We want to make sure students are, are ready and willing to do that, and they want to have a different type of high school experience. So when I mention that, that it is more of a, of a student looking at the, the programs, caring about our, our high school experience, and then making sure that, that is a fit for who they are as a student. That's our goal. We want to make sure that we are not excluding anyone, that we are inclusive of all students if they want to proceed and pursue this pathway. So important dates, and we are, we are well on our way and almost completely through our planning year, and that will conclude in August of this year, and we are getting ready for implementation. Students will be arriving, starting with the summer bridge program in July, and then starting with our first cohort of students in, in September. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Harry at this point.
Can we just pause for any questions on the PTEC with Hudson High School? Or members, do you have any questions?
Very, very straightforward. Please participate in my, my work, and because it's a really exciting, exciting opportunity to have you involved as a sponsoring district superintendent to help guide that process. Really, it is such a wonderful opportunity for us, and at first, I think, to be on a college campus.
Yeah, so just to mention quickly, the, our PTEC Early College High School is only the second in New York State to be on a college campus, and the first outside of New York City. We are also, to the best that we can tell, the first that it's kind of combined, both Early College High School and PTEC in one program. So we are doing things a little bit differently, and we are, we are cutting edge. I do want to just say thank you very much to East Greenberg School District. You've been great partners with us throughout this entire process, the planning, in the planning process. Superintendent Simons has been a huge part of that, and a great voice in, in those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, no presentation will be complete tonight if we don't talk a little bit about the pandemic. This is the interesting part of a presentation, I guess. But I will say this, I mean, we know a huge student, in fact, we had a huge family impact, instructional impact. There's so many studies out there about the learning gap, the fact that the pandemic has been. I read one from Brown University that said, all students are at least a few months to a year behind. And then I read another one from a Kansas City company that said, students would never recover from this learning gap. So it's, but I will assure you, with the leadership of Superintendent Simon and our whole team at Questar and all of our superintendents in this region, we're working very hard to make sure that the learning gap is going to be very temporary. That's why we are rolling out the kind of programs that Anthony described earlier in such detail. So what we have done, I mean, we have built a lot of partnerships with, with the communities to try and help us through this pandemic, and the, also the state health department. And we do it on a weekly basis, twice a week with our superintendents and our business officials, just to coordinate and kind of have a coordinated regional response when it comes to closures, reopenings, the challenges that we're facing day in and day out, testing, that was a big issue, you know, I mean, even the, getting personally hit for a while was very, very difficult. So, but we stuck together and, and we worked together to, to go through this, this pandemic. I will say this, I mean, over at Questar, we are focused for a really, really long time about building an organization that can absorb, can, you know, can handle emergencies. When we were doing our initial planning and redesigning of our organization, I never thought that I would be dealing with a pandemic. I thought I was going to be dealing with, we thought we were going to be dealing with a terrorist attack with some kind of weather condition, et cetera. But here came the pandemic, and I think that's, that's when we tested our system, and that's when our system quite frankly helped us, a machine kill this, this emergency. A few years ago, I remember I did a presentation reminding, reminding regarding our health and safety services, and you have trusted us with your business, and that was a huge change for this district at the time. And I'm glad to say that, you know, we're providing a lot of services to this district, so I have to, I would say, and quite frankly, I think that we were able to learn your trust, especially with the way we have, with this pandemic. Now, what I've done is like I do every year on these, on these presentations, I kind of summarized the, oops. Was to go back to health and safety, I guess, and talk more about the pandemic. But I did summarize the services that you're currently purchasing for us. I guess this is just a sample. We have over 300 different services, you know, these are some of the ones that you're buying, obviously, career technical education and special education, those are big components. You purchase approximately five million dollars worth of services from us, two million is special education services, the rest is other BOCs services from GASP 75 that calculates the actuarial value of your post-entirement benefits to PTEC. So there's a huge variety of services that you purchase. So your BOCs rate ratio is 61%, however, when you look at the BOCs eligible services, you get back about 54% on the dollar, because obviously there's costs in there that are not BOCs eligible. So for example, anything that becomes property of the district or salaries over $30,000 or something, BOCs eligible. The next slide talks about some of other programs that are available. I just want to stress that PTEC was missed there because that's a new program, and quite frankly, your district has been a leader in making sure that, that program was established. Jeff worked with the committee, that kind of created the vision for that program. We went ahead, applied to the state, got the money. I mean, there was an immense, immense amount of work that happened in order to make this thing take place. And quite frankly, we have great partners, because I know Hudson Valley Community College invested a ton of funds in infrastructure to make sure that they converted their space in the midst of our students. So that's a great new thing for our, for our region. I also would like to talk a little bit or give you an update on the rest of the education center, the revitalization plan. We've been talking for this, about this project for a number of years now. You recall, it was a three, three-year of preface program. Two summers ago, we did phase one, which was side work. We improved the bus loop, the parking lots, we created a new entrance and exit at our facility. We also improved the drainage of those, of that side. So that was two summers ago. Last summer, in the midst of the pandemic, we went ahead and completed phase two. Basically, what we've done is we, we took care of half of the building, and we completely aggregated for the half of the building. This summer, we're going to do the other half, and then that's it. I hope you do that appropriately. That's a project that has been in the works for more than a decade. My colleague, that's what we retired 16 years ago, you know, used to, we used to run numbers all the time, oh, why do we are in the education center? I'm, I'm just glad that we're bringing that discussion to, to my end. I got some pictures here of the first phase. That is the whole building, that's the new bus loop. You can see the new parking lot and entrance way that we created, and that happened two summers ago. I also have a little video, if it's going to work, that shows you what we did last summer. I just hope it's gonna, the those embedded links are gonna work there. Yeah, it's not. No, let me, let me try it from here. All right. Well, sometimes it works. That's, that's actually, that's the first time that I, I haven't been able to play it, but anyway. Basically, what we've done is, to half of the building, we rearranged some of the, some of the classrooms in that building, we replaced the flooring, we replaced the ceilings, we insulated the, the, the ceilings, we, we configured classrooms, bathrooms, we, for example, our color program, we have brand new equipment, brand new freezers, coolers. Cosmetology, that was another program that we had, we had in space, so we have all my new equipment, etc., for, for the students. So it has been, it has been a busy summer last year, but it's going to be pretty busy this year also, but we're coming to the end of that particular project, and thank you for your support, because we value your support. Then lastly, also, I thank you for our, our administrative budget, because unanimously approved by all of our components, you're going to see that there's a slight increase on your share, it's all because there was an increase in the expenditure amount. You are one of a handful of districts that has seen an increase in their student enrollment, so you know, in our region, those 23 school districts, we lost about 260 students. So when you sum everyone's enrollments together, right? And, you know, there were quite a few districts that lost students, there were quite a few that, again, I think, experience had the most gained, so to speak, as far as the number of students. So that's all that I had. I don't know if you have any questions for me, for answering. So that's all that I had, I don't know if you have any questions for me, for answering.
Thank you very much, any questions for the others? Any information, share it. Jeffrey Duncan, oh, Jeffrey, yes.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about the grant writing component and what things that you might be offering to districts or what you could provide to districts, especially with funding, right, shrinking?
Right, right. You have a grant writer in-house and you also have contacts with a number of outside grant writers that we utilize on a project by project basis. It's part of your administrative budget, we do have some basic grants that we provide. So for example, we do research as far as what grants are out there. Research the federal government websites, the state, et cetera, so we kind of share that information. But then, if the district wants to write specific grants, then we have in-house staff and we also have other consultants that we utilize on a holistic basis to help write grants.
Thanks, Jeffrey, any other questions for Harry?
Well, I want to thank Harry and Anthony for everything that they've done during this, well, everything in general, but particularly since last March, we really, although we don't meet in person very often, we've really gotten to know each other. Within our Questar, Bosse is quite well, as Harry mentioned, maybe twice a week and sometimes three, depending on the situation. I will say that, a couple of things. I think the decision that we made to switch to the health, safety, risk management closer could not have been better timed given the needs that we've experienced over the last, you know, 15 months. So I think that turned out to be a very good shift and I would agree with Harry's characterization that there are a number of services that we've been receiving from, from that service that's been very, very beneficial. Not only having Sam here two days a week, but also with Craig Hansen really pulling everybody together and continuing to work with all of us on all of the state requirements, facilitating county department of health meetings, just checking in and making sure that we're doing everything in accordance with what's expected. As rules continue to change, it really turned out to be a very accessible service and a quality service. And I just wanna say I appreciate the board supporting that recommendation. The PTEC grant, we're very excited about it. The board and I, since the last few years, have talked about making sure that the educational opportunities that we provide for the students provide multiple pathways. They want to pursue a college degree, if they want to move into a technical field, if they want to start to think about what they want to do when they graduate from high school. And there's no better program design to do those things and accomplish all of those things than the early college, high school and the PTEC model. We've had nine kids, I think, so far, who've applied to the program. We don't have the most, I think we're close to having the most.
Yeah, we have the most.
We have the most. We're hoping that as the students transition into that program, they'll really benefit from it. And serving on the steering committee, as was mentioned, and make sure that we get that program off the ground successfully. So I'm very encouraged by it, excited about it and forward to visiting it in the fall. Couple of things that you didn't mention, the summer school initiative that we're putting together will be Bosse's aidable for this summer. So we'll use monies from the general fund that we've budgeted, but we'll get back that cost of 50% or 52% that Harry indicated as our Bosse's aid ratio. That will, that will be not only beneficial from a revenue standpoint next year, but we're also, part of the model is our teachers will get to collaborate to develop the curriculum for that program, I mean, assessments for that program, with teachers from other districts, which is always very, very powerful experience. So Terry Bordell from Questar met with Jim today and Linda today, they finalized how to make sure that that process of claiming the expenses will work. So there's a number of things that we're doing together and we'll continue to do together to continue to provide creative services to the kids in the communities in East Cleveland. So I appreciate all that you're doing and I'm sorry that Dr. Cruz couldn't be here to, so that we could thank her, but, you know, I think, I think our relationship and our working relationship in terms of the programs that we're developing are really solid by moving down a very, very successful path.
Yeah, thank you, thanks, thank you, Jeff. And, you know, the one, the silver lining in the COVID cloud is that we did get closer together as a region. And we are working more closely together than we ever worked. And I think quite frankly, that's the byproduct of, so that's, if there's any good news about the pandemic, maybe that's it. But we'll continue doing that and there's more good things out there, kind of, East Cleveland School District and Questar today. Thank you guys, thank you.
Harry, I don't have a question, just a comment. Where we, where we were and where we're going is great to see. The collaboration and some of the tensions that were here years ago, that we've really moved past that. I know within our own group, it was a lot of discussion in your group and I just want to, for you to go back and express to your folks and to Gladys that we appreciate that because it truly demonstrates that we're all here and we're putting the students first. And I think that's what, if we can say anything about the relationship that East Cleveland Bush has with Questar, it is student-driven and we've put that back on track. Being, that being said, you set the bar so high that we're really expecting even greater things next year. So thanks again, at least relay that to everyone else.
Thank you, thank you.
Harry, don't feel bad, he says that to me every year.
So we're gonna screw up once and then why, just blow it up, but thank you, folks.
Mark, has a comment?
Yeah, just being on Questar's board as well, you know, I can attest to what Anthony and Harry said. And I went to that branch right there before any of the projects started and we got a couple tours of it and it's phenomenal, it's just state of the art, it's unbelievable. But I also get to see sit in Questar and our kids from East Cleveland Bush and the successes that they're definitely having up in Questar. It's a testament to these two gentlemen, Lys, all the programs that Questar offers. And, you know, I'm so glad that we're really involved where we are with Questar. Put a little plug out there for Gladys, as Gladys was chosen by the Albany Business Review. It's one of their 2021 leaders in diversity the other day. So that's a huge testament to her, everything she does over at Questar. So I appreciate that, Anthony, Harry, appreciate everything you guys do in Gladys. Best of our heart, we're so thankful for her almost as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And then, really, I just echo what John said, the range of opportunities that are available to students in this region, in our district in particular, because we aim to serve all our families and all our communities in this district and give our students those opportunities to explore and to find their path and to be successful adults and go on to successful careers, college or grade to high school, to career or military. And we want to provide, continue to provide those opportunities for our children and our families. And I think that the things that Questar Bosse's can do to help support those opportunities for kids and families in the region is important. And I know our children and our families are taking advantage of those opportunities to a great degree. And the PTEC, and like Clough High School is another example of expanding those opportunities for kids and it's just great to see and be part of it, so thank you. Do you want to thank Mark for his service on the board?
Oh, three years.
You liked it? Thank you very much, I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, folks.
Have a great night.
We do have a second presentation tonight and it'll be by Mr. McHugh, is that correct? Mr. McHugh is going to present the completion of the grade two and grade three standard-based report cards project. Mr. McHugh.
Just want to give an update on our standard-based report cards. If you remember, we talked about this about two years ago, kindergarten and grade one, implementing standard-based report cards. Part of board feedback is to make sure that we put something in place to review after the initial implementation. So I'll talk about that briefly, but a real quick timeline. Fall 2018, we established a K-1 report card committee. It was formed, it had 10 teachers, five kindergarten teachers, one from each of our elementary buildings, five first-grade teachers, one from each of our elementary buildings. In the fall of 2019, we piloted the new standard-based report card in K in grade one. And also in the fall of 19, we established a grade two and a grade three report card committee. Again, making sure that we had one teacher rep from each of our five elementary buildings at both grade levels. Fall 2020, we, the new standard-based report cards in kindergarten grade one were fully implemented. I just point out that it is in Power School, which means that right now with the adoption of the grades two and grade three standard-based report cards, K through 12 district-wide, our report cards are on our student information system generated through Power School. Spring 2021, we solicited feedback from our kindergarten and grade one teachers, so we brought them together. And I believe that was also a concern from our board when we first implemented, that we wanted to make sure that we monitored it, we sought out feedback and then we made the necessary changes. So based on the feedback that we received, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, it wasn't the report card in design, what it was, was the rubric or the pacing. So these standard-based report cards, I'll talk about that. They also put the focus back on teaching and learning, but they also make sure that we are consistent in all five of our elementary buildings in regards to what we teach and when we teach it. The new standard-based report cards for grades two and three were completed this spring. They were presented to CCS on May 5th. And really, just a quick walkthrough on this is what really generated this is some deep discussions about the purpose of a grade and what follows after the grade. So what's the purpose of the grade, what follows after the grade and who's the report card actually for? The report card is a communication tool to parents, to let parents know exactly how their child is progressing towards those standards. What shouldn't we be grading and what shouldn't we be grading? How consistent should grades be and grading be across time and across teachers? Meaning that, you know, if you look back at our old report cards and just stick a letter grade, A, B, C, D, is an A in one teacher's classroom gonna be an A in another teacher's classroom? That's really important to really have that consistency. Do we have quality controls in place when it comes to grading? Do we have any district-wide criteria that helps us with grading? And what criteria could be, should be used? In other words, is an A in mathematics in one class gonna be an A in another teacher's class at the same grade level? What do we currently base our grades on? Instructional resources, opinions, assessments, standards? How do we really come up with what constitutes that final grade? So this generated a lot of deep professional dialogue. Do we currently grade and report on what we actually teach? Is teaching, assessing and reporting currently aligned? And how difficult is it to currently defend your grades? Is there anything that would make it easier? So when we think about the value of those parent-teacher conferences, really the emphasis should be on how the child's progressing towards those standards. Are we in a difficult situation at times justifying a grade when they ask what constituted that grade? So we're looking for more consistency, you know, we talked about what we really wanted. And then, just to generate some discussion, you know, letter grades, I made just some general statements and then opened it up just to get the conversation going. But letter grades don't break things down enough. I don't know what my child specifically needs to do in order to improve. For example, from a B to an A, so when you get that report card and you look at that grade, does it really let you know what your child really needs to work on in order to show that growth? Failure to give grades against the state standards is irresponsible. So we have the state standards that are what we should be aligned to and our teaching should be aligned to. Should an effort and progress be more heavily weighted first than simple academic achievement? You should utilize rubrics and give grades against all rubrics at the end of each marking period. Rubrics to track progress over time against the standards. I don't think a week in the time that I've been in this position working for Mr. Simon that he hasn't said the word rubric. So I'm pretty sure he uses rubrics at home, he's a rubric guy, but that's the power.
I tried, it didn't fly well.
That's actually the power, it is the rubrics that are really driving our report cards. You know, and then the comment that, I didn't teach that yet. Assessments should be based in terms of longer-term learning goals versus grades that are just the average of recent quizzes, tests and projects. You know, and that part that I didn't teach that yet, when you're putting four or five teachers in the room together in the same building and they didn't teach the same content and the same standards, that's problematic, okay? You know, especially when we look at the number of students that relocate during the school year from one of our elementary buildings to another elementary building. You know, we had that situation where students might change schools right in the district and they already read that book or they already covered that math concept. So this is really tightening that up quite a bit along with our mapping. You know, a report card, most importantly, should be honest and fair and honest account of the student's strengths and weaknesses against the standards, mindful of extenuating circumstances. To be credible, a graded judgment must be based on multiple and varied assessments. We're working towards this in our mapping, so we're working on developing consistent end-of-the-unit assessments, K through 5. So all students are getting the same assessment, we're working on that even throughout the other grade levels, the high school, common midterms, things, those have been things that we've worked on. Iterator reliability, measurable data. Human judgments must be as objective as possible, reliable. You know, objective is reliable, subjective biased, can be good or bad, we just talk about these things. We talked about our older report cards. First of all, they weren't aligned to the standards. The process of actually completing the report card, very laborious. Grade three has separate carbon copy form for special areas. So a special area teacher, if there were 100 students in grade three, they were filling out 100 carbon copy forms for art, that's all gone away. Don't allow our parents or our students to easily grasp the feedback we want to provide. And I talked about that. If you look at the old report cards, there were a lot of keys. There was S, satisfactory, O, outstanding, check, check plus. You know, you really, you really had to spend a lot of time memorizing that key going back and looking at the report card. A few non-negotiables before we started our work. We wanted uniformity in the sense of we were either gonna go with our, stay with our traditional grading or we were gonna move to standard-based grading. Consistency in approach all five buildings. The critical steps, really important, was communication. Making sure that our principals were aware of the work that was being done, what our end goal was, what we were working for with the update, progress, faculty and staff, making sure that we had representation from all five buildings and making sure that those representatives were going back to their buildings to communicate with their grade-level peers and colleagues, getting that feedback. Parents, we used the report card guide, so there's a specific report card guide that's been created for each of those grades. That tool is out on desktops for open house and teachers are walking parents through. That was a big transition going from traditional grading to standard-based grading, right? We all remember how we were graded, we had the letter grades, we had numerical grades, so standard-based grading. New, I think the pilot helped quite a bit. And remember, our kindergarten and first-grade parents and students are accustomed to this now. So the transition to grades two and three, it was done in a good sequence, K-1, now 2, 3. Training and support, our own data department, Todd Witherall, did a phenomenal job training our teachers on how to use it through Power School. So the actual rubrics are an add-on feature, customization in Power School. Teachers are completing that rubric during the term, there's three terms in the elementary. When the marking period ends, those report cards are automatically generated. When it's parent-teacher conference time, those teachers are sitting with parents with that report card out, with the rubric out. It's specifically for every entry in the report card, there's a rubric entry describing what a level four is, describing what a level three is, describing what a level two and a level one is. So there's transparency, parents know exactly what the child needs to be able to demonstrate, what they need to be able to do in order to be at that level. in order to be at that level 3 or level 4. We continue to monitor the rollout, and we revisit, and we're responsive. We seek and respond to stakeholder feedback. If I can get a report card up, can you pull one up for me, Peter?
It's my grade 1.
Yeah, that's fine. Can you pull another, this is either grade 2 or grade 3?
Yeah.
So here's a grade 2 report card, term 1, term 2, term 3. You can see right here, reads and identifies site words. There's areas where it is, can you roll it up just a little bit? You can see here, and here's a better example, demonstrates an understanding of informational text. It's graded, because that's not a standard or a concept that's being taught in term 1. What that does when it's graded out in that box is nobody gets stressed. Every teacher needs to make sure that that's not what they're being, you know, that's not what they're teaching during that term 1. That concept starts to be evaluated in term 2. So it does control the pacing, it does control the content that's being taught each term, and we have greater consistency in all of our elementary buildings. Teachers are on the same page. It's aligned to the maps that we created. So all of that mapping that we've worked on for years now, and that mapping will continue. It's, the report cards are aligned to that. So every entry that you see on this report card, there's a rubric, an accompanying rubric that actually describes what a level 4, level 3, level 2, level 1 is. Any questions? Comments? Yeah?
So just out of curiosity, because I can appreciate the complexity of this, differentiated learning. So how does that integrate into, so for example, if I'm bringing out, right, the more advanced, right, in that term 1, how does the differentiated learning kind of lay over that gem? Do you know what you've got, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Peter.
Meaning that we modify the expectation. That's the great thing, that's a great question, and that's the bonus of standards-based grading. So it's taking the emphasis off of that grade. You know, the typical little league field and soccer field, you know, report cards came out. My child had a 92 in science, or my child had a median mathematics within your child. It puts the focus and the emphasis back on teaching and learning. So if there is, the New York State standards, the next-generation standards, are the standards. They're the standards for all students. So it's how the student is progressing to meet that standard. So the differentiation is right in the levels. You know, a student may be a, maybe a level 2 on that particular standard at that time. But it's a clear path and a clear explanation of what the student needs to accomplish. So if there is a student with an individual education plan, then that individual education plan puts those supports in place so the students can be at that level 3 and level 4. Does that help answer that question?
It does. It's just when you look at it, right?
Yeah, it's an adjustment period.
Absolutely.
What I will say also is that there's been several school districts that have found these report cards and have called and contacted us to ask us, can I purchase them, can I borrow them? So they're online, they're in PDF format, have had it. We've been very good neighbors, and we've shared these out. There's people that have contacted us from all over the state looking at these. So the goal is that the grade 2 and grade 3 report cards, standard-based report cards, are implemented next year. We'll start to put a grade 4 and a grade 5 report card committee together, and we'll start to revisit that. There will be a transition period where we go back towards traditional grading. Where that goes, that's, I'll report back to you. I don't come out of that committee work. Any questions?
Making progress, James.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for your work on this. I think the consistency will prove monumental when these kids get to golf, and they can talk the same thing or read it the same way. I really think that we will see the benefits of this when the kids get to golf.
I agree, and the other thing that will also be noticed while at golf is, you saw there was a great, science and social studies are on the report cards, it's being graded, it needs to be taught. So there's been such a heavy focus on ELA and mathematics in the elementary school, and that's really, that's come, that came down from the state, right? They have that accountability tied to AP, PR, science and social studies, it's on the report cards. We have those consistent units of instruction in science and social studies. I think what we will hear from our middle school teachers and eventually our high school teachers is that the kids are coming with a better foundational knowledge, especially in the content areas. Thank you.
Jim, one question. On level 3 report card, team 1 is like, or get graded out for art, music, and gym. Why would that be?
We haven't put an official grade. That's, that's the way they do it consistently, so did you send the grade 2 report card?
Uh, I didn't.
Term 1, there's no grade. It's a slight transition to grading. So if you look at the K and grade 1 report card, it's, it's, it's not listed on there. And then that's where it starts to be introduced. So the first term, they're not getting that grade, and then the art getting the grade.
Thank you.
Jim, just a comment. There's a tremendous amount of work that went into this and a lot of conversation, and very evident. And I would encourage anybody that has access to this presentation in the public to look at it. Because I think it identifies, you know, we keep talking about certain student-based learning and student progress, but we're getting back to the individual and being able to tailor their educational plan when you have a good litmus to see how they're doing and the progress they're truly making. And that is one of the things that we've been talking about for years. When I think about my own school experiences, as my children's school experience, the subjectivity at the lower grade levels can be really detrimental and allow a kid to slip through without really identifying some of the needs. And I think that this gives us a great opportunity for earlier interventions before they get into that real critical thing. Not that you need any more work, but one of the challenges with the grading is at the middle school and high school level as well. Because again, I do like the idea of teachers' individual strengths and their different teaching styles, because it teaches some resiliency and part of that path. But one of the things I would like to see as this model goes into the, you know, makes it to that level is that consistency in grading might not have to be as intense as this, but to have a general departmental standard to where there is no rubric. Because then it will truly get rid of the people who are shopping teachers, so to speak, that quite honestly has gone on, even when I was a million years ago when the horse was killed. We navigated through that, those types of path. Whereas if we create a really good rubric as we move through, the benefit will, like you said, go up to that middle school and high school level, because that's when it's really challenging. So again, thanks for the effort. I think it's, I think it goes to the emphasis on long-term planning that we put in educational plans is going to outlive at least our tenure on the board and then the district for a long time to come. So I really appreciate your efforts in this.
Yeah, just a quick comment, because I don't want the middle school to be neglected either. They have really engaged in a lot of curriculum writing over the summers, but those, those things, you don't see that work for a period of time. So they engaged in curriculum mapping and mathematics and science. What we have tried to do is we try to get all the teachers, or give all the teachers the ability to engage in that work, right? Rather than one or two doing that work in the summer and doing that curriculum mapping and that curriculum writing, because we want people to own it and we want people to utilize it. So we have broadened that quite a bit. And we do some curriculum work. We could have 10 or 12 people working in the summer on that curriculum project.
I think that's really important, the way you just framed that and not to, we want to keep our teachers engaged. And I do believe in brainstorming and group think, especially on the department level. And I never want a teacher to lose their own personal style because of a standard. But as long as we get to the goal where the kids are learning, you know, these can learn differently, but still know the same thing at the end of the day. And I think that's what makes high school special, is that you can get to a teacher that is really excited about what they do, and that student clicks with that teacher, because a lot of it is personality and style for people. And I think when kids have that opportunity to gravitate where they feel comfortable, they will then learn more. And the same goes for teachers. If they teach in a lane that they're comfortable in, it'll be a lot more effective. And I just think that the environment that you guys have provided for our staff really just encourages that. And I just want to see that grow and continue. So thanks again.
Thanks, John. Any other comments? Tremendous work, want to thank the staff involved. And the districts who like that work that is being done. The important part, like Jeff said, John, is really that the conversations, the questions you posed earlier, to get to that point, so teachers and staff understand, families understand. That's a lot of work. It's not a boilerplate kind of thing. It's got to have those conversations that take place before heads or parents. The community can understand what's happening, how they can help their child and make those meaningful transitions to this, this grade system. Pardon us to the team and to complete that.
All right. Very good. That concludes our reports and presentations. We have several discussion items. The first discussion item is the annual reword meeting in July in the schedule draft. Jeff, you want to comment about your reword?
Yeah. I, as we were putting together the board calendar for next year, I came to realize quickly that the, the organizational meeting or the reword meeting is required by state education department law to be on the first Tuesday in July. But if it's a legal holiday, it can move to the Wednesday. But also, boards can adjust that date as long as you have it by the 15th of the month. So I had a conversation with Don Bubbin, and he's prepared to set a resolution if the board is available. That week, I, I didn't realize that I had a prior vacation that I better take if the form of the board can be here. So, so I'm asking the board to consider moving it to the week of the 15th. And if the board is comfortable with that, you have availability, I'll ask Don to draft a resolution, and we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
So what day are you looking at, John?
So this, the handout says July 13th, is that it?
Yes, but it could be the 13th, the 14th, or the 15th, as long as it's done by the 15th.
I'm on vacation that week.
I'm here, just showing hands. Cheryl will be here, John, myself. I think we'll have a form, and we'll check with Kathleen and Anna.
Which day is preferable to those that could be here that are here this week? Does it matter?
13 to 14 for me is better.
13, okay. So 13th is okay right now? Cheryl, it okay with you? Okay. So we'll draft it, we'll check in with Kathleen and Anna, and then we'll.
Two resolutions.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
We did try to schedule a couple more meetings. There's a lot of things happening with school, maybe in the fall, that we want to make sure that we cover any school business. So there is additional weekend, although that may give stress for vacations, things like that. But if we can kind of get through that to help administration, the team to address some of the business things that they have to do as we go back to school in the fall. I want to say reopen, because reopen, that's a different thing. So you do those kinds of things. So if there's going to be some challenges, look at that schedule that myself or Jeff know, so we can at least make sure that there's form.
We had an August meeting. We usually have one in the summer. Though with everything regarding opening in September, as Mike said, we think we might need another meeting. And then there were other some months where we've only had one meeting, where there's a three-week lag between meetings, and it creates a volume of administrative responsibilities that have to bring to the board and lengthens the meetings. So November and December, we did adjust, compared to prior years, the week that we're having a meeting, and we've gone to two meetings. If that's okay with the board.
Work's running. Any other feedback, just let Jeff know, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for helping me stay married by going on vacation. That was a joke.
The next item to me is the policy admission of non-resident students. It's all back for a moment?
Yes, last year, we received a request from an employee that we could not grant because our current policy regarding non-resident students required the payment of tuition. At the time, Mark Mann, our board vice president, asked for us to consider a policy that would permit employees to attend, have their children attend the school district and to waive the tuition for employees that were non-residents. We had two policy committee meetings with our policy committee to discuss this topic. We made some revisions to the current admission of non-resident students policy. We reviewed those changes with our attorney, Don Bubbin. So basically, what we have done is revised the current policy 51, 52, that covers non-resident students to permit employees to allow their children to attend tuition-free. There are some caveats and parameters for that approval. It includes submitting an application to the district by February so that we know how many students we can project as we prepare our budget. It also provides a reinforcement that transportation would not be provided for non-resident students, which is our current policy. Even in the case of employees, they would have to have transportation to school provided by the parent or some other arrangement. The policy also indicates that consideration of admission of non-resident students would not contribute to larger class, larger class sizes than what we're used to, incur additional expenses that could be foreseen. For example, having to add additional classroom sections of elementary grades. The policy would also not guarantee that an employee would be able to have their child, for example, at the elementary school level, attend the school that they actually work in. It would be based on enrollment and class sizes across, for example, the five elementary schools. And the other provision we put in is that this policy would not waive any contractual requirements of our employees, so their work hours, for example, the time that they have to report to school, the time that they are required to stay to the end, that we would not, this policy would not accommodate any changes in the workday as required by the contract. And that was based on board feedback at the policy committee. So we feel we have addressed almost every issue. This is a policy that we would want to monitor if we decide to go in this direction. The policy also, I forgot to mention, requires that the student maintain good academic achievement and follow the code of conduct. So we have a situation, for example, where factors such as a disciplinary concern contributed to a decision, perhaps it happened in another district. If there was a disciplinary concern in another district that triggered the request, or a situation that occurred when the student was here. This is a benefit that we're providing to our employees, and it can be revolved.
Any feedback for on the policy? I think you covered, I really appreciate the, the questions I had were answered. I would like to see the data. I think we have to have something in place to see how this works for a couple of years. I would like to revisit it in case there is some, some concerns about numbers and placements and things like that. Do you hopefully have the final decision?
Yes.
But I think, you know, the elementary question for me is for where they go. It's not a guarantee that it's for school, it's based on enrollment. It could potentially be shipped to another school, you want to ring the district. So those kinds of things are important for families who choose to send their children. So next steps, is any other comments? Next steps?
Well, we scheduled as a discussion item tonight, so it's not on for a first reading. If there are no concerns or objections to this, we will bring it forward to the next meeting as the first reading.
Okay.
As we typically do. And if anybody has any questions or comments between now and next time, or between the first reading and the second reading, we can make revisions to the policy.
I think that because it's not a discussion item, if there are committee members who want to weigh in on this, I think that seems appropriate. I agree with that. That sounds good.
Very good. Just a quick question, Jeff. Is there, will this create a flood, or have you have a litmus for how much the employees would utilize this?
I don't really. I don't really know. I haven't discussed this with employee groups yet because I wasn't sure whether or not the board was going to approve the policy. I would say that I think that some of our employees would want to benefit from this change. I don't know how many. I know there are other factors that would enter into appearance, my kids going to the same school with the kids in their neighborhood. You know, generally, it's something that would prevent somebody from doing this. I think it's going to be very individualized based on the family circumstances.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think revisiting the issue, get more data about that.
We can provide you with class size data, resident students versus non-resident students by building, the resident students are attending by building and by grade level.
Yeah.
You happy to do that?
I don't think we've really ever had a problem with tuition payment numbers for non-resident students flooding out the districts. Or saying, no, anyway, because we didn't like them. No, I agree that I don't think we're going to have a huge influx. But I think the policy's solid. I think it's a good policy to see on the inside of our students.
That wasn't my concern at all. I go off on my think we could encourage people to pay us tuition, join us, and it's great service we're providing. It's great. I was just looking at it as an employee nothing, because then we're not getting any tuition.
Right.
So, that, and I didn't, I was just concerned, I mean, I don't want to say concerned, but I just was wondering if you had an idea that because, say hypothetically, if 10 people did it right away, that is an economic impact for us. And I just want to be prepared for that. I'm not opposed to the impact, but I just, if we have some doubt, I would consider kind of have an idea of what we're in for.
I think that February 1st, some of the sample policies that we looked at had June deadlines. I talked to the policy committee that I would prefer February so that we could manage where those kids would be assigned as we do our class size projections and number of sections across K5, which is part of our budget process. Another thing is to let the parent know early enough that, well, yes, we can accommodate your child, but it may be a different school than what they anticipated. And the reasons are because we want to have the class sizes be equitable across the district as much as possible. But we will definitely keep the board informed once this policy is approved of, you know, what's happening, how many students are we anticipating coming to the district, and whether or not it is happening in effect. One thing I forgot to add was, this isn't, substitutes are not eligible for this. We talked about that with the community. These are employees that are, it can be probationary employees, but they are, you know, regular employees, not substitutes.
Very good. Next item, see end of year celebrations, ceremonies, and activities?
Yes, I have received some communications from parents regarding some of the end of the year celebrations. And I wanted to take an opportunity publicly to talk about the efforts that are going on, to make sure that we celebrate the achievement of our kids at the end of this year appropriately. And I think we are doing that at the fifth grade level, and at the eighth grade level, and at the high school level. I'll start with graduation. Around April 27th, the state issued new guidance for end of the year celebrations, which included parameters for indoor and outdoor ceremonies. It included virtual ceremonies all the way up to outdoor ceremonies. Since then, we look at that policy and any changes that have come forth, which haven't been very many. And the initial guidance indicated that for an outdoor ceremony, if you had more than 250 attendees, you had to require the attendees to provide a proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test. In the case of a rapid test, that test had to be conducted within six hours prior to the ceremony. In the case of the PCR test, it had to be 72 hours prior to the ceremony. It was 250. To go to 251, they'd have to have those two requirements. And we discussed here, actually, at a board meeting, that we felt that we would run into some difficulties managing that process, enforcing that process, and so we decided that we would stay within the limits of 250 attendees. We received some clarification from the state for both athletics and graduations that the students don't count as part of that 250, as long as they are sitting in a different area than the spectators or the attendees. But even with our size class, we are still looking at very, very large numbers with 350, a little bit shy of 350 students, 700 attendees, and it was two parents or two family members attending. So, the 700 was well over the threshold, and so we decided to go with multiple ceremonies to reduce the number of attendees within those limits, which reduces the number of students that graduate through each of the respective ceremonies. Since that time, the state indicated one change, and they raised the number of attendees for an outdoor ceremony to 500. And so, in that case, we took a look at what could be done. We even considered the alternative of having one ceremony, and we felt that, given the capacity of the high school, in combination with the challenges of ensuring that everyone there, every person there who was attending that ceremony would have the proof of a negative COVID test and vaccine, that we could potentially run into a situation where someone was denied access to the ceremony, could cause potential disruption, and we didn't want to take that chance. And so, we decided, now that we could let more people in, and I conferred with some of our board officers, as well as with the high school administrators, our central office team, Mr. Harkins' team here at the high school, Karen Vincent, our COVID coordinator, Molly McGrath, and we examined the logistics that would be involved in requiring the testing. And we just came to the conclusion that it would be potentially trouble problems. So, we did decide to address some of the concerns that we've had about perhaps providing students with opportunity to bring more than just two guests. And we made an adjustment from our original four ceremony model down to three, and we are allowing families to bring, or students to bring four guests. And we feel that that is an adjustment that will keep us within the parameters of the state guidance. We think it will provide more opportunities for our graduates to invite brothers and sisters, for example, or grandma and grandpa. And we think at this point, unless something unforeseeable happens, that's the model we're going to go with for the high school graduation. At the middle school level, the PTO worked with Jill Barker, the principal, to survey the parents. The initial survey that went out included a similar program that occurred last year for eighth grade elevation, which was a drive-through celebration in front of the school. Second option included virtual award ceremonies and some other things. We added a third option once we had confidence that the graduation ceremony could be set up in advance on a Thursday. We're going to use the same structure for eighth grade elevation, same setup at the high school, on the high school field, same seating arrangements, same procedures, same equipment, including the use of the Jumbotron and live streaming. So, they will have, eighth graders will have a ceremony at the high school on Thursday evening. I think that's the 24th. And the rain date for that will be the next morning because the afternoon is scheduled for the high school ceremony. So, we think in the case of both the middle school elevation celebration and the high school graduation ceremony, that it would be very nice for our graduates to attend. While we wish we could have all the kids together and invite as many guests as we wanted, we think that what we will be offering to the community today would be very, very nice and appropriate. And then students are free to, if students are not assigned to a group with all of their friends, certainly after the ceremonies are completed, we recommend that. There'll be other things, social experiences, graduation parties, other things happening. One of the reasons why we moved it to a Friday because families had been expressing to us that they wanted to have the Saturday open for graduation celebrations. At the fifth grade level, there's lots of things happening for the kids. Logistics of setting up a ceremony for a fifth grade moving up are a little bit more difficult, younger children, more people, not necessarily appropriate outdoor facilities in every building. So, the fifth grade principals all got together and developed the same plan, and that will be a drive-through event, but a little bit more extended than last year. Kids will be able to get out of the cars with their families, receive gifts and certificates as they have in the past. There'll be an opportunity for photos to be taken outside of the car. There'll be music playing, decorations, and all kinds of fanfare out front of the schools, and we think it will be very, very nice. In addition, the fifth grade principals are all having field days that they traditionally have, school-wide picnics that they traditionally have. Some are taking students to the fun park in East Green Bush. All of these activities are being done within the current guidance. I've reviewed every one of them. I've signed off on every one of them. And I think it will be very nice for our fifth graders, our eighth graders, and our senior graduates this year. Hopefully, next year, we may find that we like having, so we might find we like having a ceremony in the high school, and we may explore ways to maintain that while we'll go back to utilizing a venue that can accommodate all of our children and their families. A lot of effort is to put it, it was on our principals and our administrative people.
Sure. Any comments on the end of year graduation? For graduation, elevation? Anyway, for the high school side, I know that all the work that was done to change and modify with the guidance, allow us to, families to be more present, I know that was something we talked about, having someone who, my son graduated recently from New Orleans, and it was kind of a walkthrough ceremony, but allowed more of us to be there, which I think was important, which is a distinction from last year. This will allow much more family members, guests, friends to be part of that, and it's really special. But I know, I feel bad that we can't be all together, but we'll make it special for them. Jennifer?
I know that the question, I know that the question has come up a lot in the correspondence that we've all been receiving. Can you talk a little bit about why perhaps the decision was to not go to another venue or option? Because I think that that's something that's weighing heavily on the minds of the parents because they're seeing the other districts around us, looking at those venues and securing those venues.
I know that Mr. Harkin spoke to all the venues that you're referring to, the Times Union Arena, Times Union Center. The Hudson Valley couldn't guarantee at the time that they would be not involved in testing. There were fluctuating prices quoted to different districts related to the Times Union. I think it's about $16,000 to $17,000. That wasn't the primary factor that we determined to rule that out. It was really about making sure that we, as a district, we know our kids, we know our families. We think there is some benefit to having it on our own property because of all the restrictions. We have existing relationships, and honestly, we worried about someone unknown to a family, a security person, I'm sure, certainly do a very good job in handling a situation with one of our families and saying, well, you can't come, grandpa can't come in, grandma can't come in, you don't have your proof of vaccination. One of the benefits that other districts have, spoke of regarding going to the Times Union Arena, is that they don't have to deal with that. I feel like as a district, as we have relationships with people, that we have, we know the kids, that we should be the ones facilitating the ceremony and not remove ourselves from that responsibility. So, that's ultimately why we decided to do it the way that we're doing it. I have had situations, not here, but in the past, where an outside venue was utilized, and the folks that were enforcing the rules didn't understand the importance of our relationships with the kids and our relationships with the families, and it's sour the event. So, we waited, we tried it, we thought about it, but at the end of the day, we thought we had more control and a better chance of success if we did it ourselves.
Thank you. I think that's great. So that everybody can kind of understand what the thought process was.
I appreciate that question, Jennifer. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a few more discussion items. The next one's on the funding for the American Rescue Plan, CRSA. There was some suggestions put out, it was a template that Ashley pulled out on those funds, and then some ideas around that. Do you want to talk briefly about that, Jeff?
Yes, I think by the next meeting, we'll have a more detailed document that's still going to share with you. We're still in the process, our central office team and others, of identifying the needs that we're going to have and developing some proposals for the board's review. As recall, we're getting about $7 million in funds that are outside the general fund budget. We want to be prudent about how those monies are spent. CARES Act monies, as well as the American Rescue Act monies. This is a template that was provided by Quest Arbozis, the New York State School Works Association, to plan out the expenditures. We envision putting together something that looks much like our scorecard as a plan, as an evaluation tool, measures, dates, timelines, objectives. Right now, we're brainstorming. We're talking about such things as academic learning gaps. What can we do to provide early intervention in our early elementary grades, K through three? That may involve deploying some additional staff that would eventually attrition out as people retire, so that if kids are coming into kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, and their reading levels and math levels, we can give them a boost by providing smaller teacher-student ratios. We're also talking about the mental health needs of our students. We're in conversations with Kathy Coons, Redstone County Commissioner of Mental Health, about a school-based clinic that would be supplemental to what our counselors and social workers already do. The benefits of a school-based clinic are if a student has an appointment for an outside referral, they're more likely to attend that appointment if the clinic is right there in the school. The family can get that, get access to it, and that may not actually cost a lot of money of any money because it's Medicaid reimbursable through the county. So, we're talking about that. We're talking about ways that we can use this money to address air quality. And through our construction meetings, we've been talking with Lynn from St. Oren, as well as our architect and trainee, about what we might be able to do to start the process of upgrades, unit annihilators that will handle some of the higher-grade filters, and a number of other areas. Talking about student engagement at the middle school and the high school level, if we can provide... the high school level, if we can provide ways for kids to, who may be chronically absent, to come back to school and want to be in school because they're involved in a program that might be a culinary program, for example, or vocational program, earlier than when they're eligible to start at BOCs. Linda and Jim, help me out, Marissa, what am I missing? We'll have a whole list for you in the next meeting, but we are working on this.
Actually, you covered quite a few. We did talk about possibly extending the CTEP program into grade five. And we considered the math, we're considering a math program, extending that to grade six. In addition to, we did talk about possibly starting our own autism program in the district. And we talked about some technology needs and how we might use some of this money to, you know, satisfy our technology needs and continue us into the future. We talked about some help desk, possibly, it would be run by students, possibly, with oversight by our own district employees. And I think that's about it.
It's very much an early work in progress. And we will have a complete draft to share with you. I'll share it in advance in the next board meeting, so if board members want to ask questions or make comments. As we speak, we're still getting documents from NISBA and NISCIS and other organizations about how to interpret these federal guidelines. The position such as the COVID coordinator can be funded in it, so we need to maintain the COVID coordinator for next year, which I think we will have to, that'll be put into that grant. Some of the purchasing of cleaning and disinfecting tools and those kinds of things are eligible within the grant. There's also a way, and we're still studying this, that we might be able to use some of this money to, if the board approved, to establish a capital reserve, which we don't have. And a capital reserve would enable you to have money set aside similar to the transportation bus purchase reserve, to offer the community a bond referendum that you take the portion that is not available from the state, and you use that money to reduce the level of share cost of it, so it would have no tax impact. And that is a permissible, as I understand it, way to utilize this money because it's creating sustainability to upgrade your infrastructures to address health and safety within your schools. We've got a lot of brainstorming going on, and I promise you we'll be spending this money wisely.
And the final posting, has to be on the website, is that why the template's there to post it at some point? Is it a requirement, is it a requirement to post it or public it?
We will have to post our plan by July 1st for public comment.
The question I had too is if work members want to be of input, you're going to send out the list and then we can kind of comment on that?
Yes.
I do think it's important, like you said earlier, Jeff, that the scorecard and the district's objectives and goals need to drive the decision-making process around this. So it's tied in directly with the needs the district are. It is a lot of money, you know, want to use it wisely and be able to sustain some of the things that we should add or release. Any other comments on this topic? I'm looking forward to seeing that list. Pre-K planning, we had money this year in the budget, it was the funding from the state for pre-K?
So we have been consulting with the state education department, as well as folks that reside in our community and work for the state, who oversee pre-K programs, specifically Head Start programs. Our allocation per student, I think it's $5,400 per student, that will cover 108 students Based on the discussions we've had so far, we've requested some samples, RFPs that were issued to community-based providers, as well as contracts that have been approved between districts and community-based providers, and we're looking at those to explore what would be involved in an RFP. The more we learn about this, the more we believe that contracting out through an RFP process to an agency that already does this, that has the curriculum in place, the supports in place, and has the space to provide it, would be the best way to go. In fact, I'm 95% certain that that would be my recommendation to the board. The advantage of that is we don't incur concerns about the sustainability of a district-operated program in a district building. Hire a number of employees, incur all of those obligations, and then we don't know whether we're even going to get the money next year. How it would work is similar to hiring the architect or hiring the auditors. Board would have input into the RFP document. We would send the RFP document out to any other CBOs that are on the list of the state who are within the E Street Bush district. I think that has to be within the district, does it not, or operating program within the district? I believe it does, I'm 100% sure of that. Okay. They would have a deadline to respond to the RFP, there are standards established in the RFP, including the use of New York State curriculum, appropriate class sizes, which are 18, 1811, if you have 19 students, you have to have 1812. You know, appropriate space for the classes, appropriate staffing, ordering mechanism back to the district because we are ultimately responsible for overseeing it. So we can collect information, we can do site visits. The slots would be paid for by the district, so we'll take, I'll make up a name, CBO number one. If they get the RFP and are awarded the RFP and they have X number of slots available, we would pay for those slots through a contract, and there might be multiple CBOs on contract with the district, because we could go up to 108 kids. Linda, am I missing anything?
Yeah, I think that is the main advantage of basically outsourcing this, is that we have an allocation of $5,400 per student up to 108 students, that's $583,200. So the space issue comes into play, so if we outsource this to multiple locations, we may be able to fill the 108 spots, whereas that may be, we may be restricted in district.
And parents would have to participate in a lottery, and that lottery would go up to the number of slots that are available. And we cannot, and it is random, so for example, we cannot say we want X number, I don't believe we can say we have X number of slots to go to families who live in Nassau or are served by DPS, it has to be completely random. So, or we want the same percentage of families across the five elementary school zones to have, we can't do that, we're not allowed by state rules to do it, it's the first 108 that get drawn in and want to participate.
Yes, completely random selection.
If you have multiple CBOs, how would that work if they're in different geographic locations? I guess, I guess, something to talk about.
Oh, yeah.
But I think that's, I mean, I think that's the direction we should go in, to provide the most opportunity for the pre-K.
It would be also, I think, the quickest way to get up and running, as opposed to setting up our own classroom, hiring our own teachers, our own teaching assistants.
I would like to see a board member to involve in the RFP in the selection process.
We are interested in informing on early childhood, maybe that's one of the things that we'll start with, so if there is a board member that has, I will work around your schedules for the meetings, but if you are interested in general, contact me and we will get you involved.
I'm interested. If anyone else wants to participate, just let me know.
I'm interested.
Right? Very good. We have all three of us.
Excellent. Well, I'm all three of you. Mike, Frank, and Michelle. I'll let you know some times and dates if it works for you. Excellent.
Next item is the Bonadieo contract extension.
Who's the first one on that one?
Thank you. So we have had a contract with Bonadieo for our independent auditing services from 2015, 16 school year through the 19, 20 school year. Before you tonight is, for your consideration, is an extension, a one-year extension for the Bonadieo group to complete the audit for the 2020, 2021 school year, and then we will issue an RFP in the fall.
Pretty straightforward? Any questions?
Why, why are we looking to extend a one-year, a right to an RFP?
Well, quite honestly, during the transition, it became later in the year, so the RFP process would have been too rushed to establish that in time for the audit this year.
So technically, their contract is expired right now.
And Linda, how much increase was there?
Did we, did they ask us for a one-year extension, or are we asking them for a one-year?
We are asking them for a one-year extension.
Assuming they're interested?
You raised some valid points, I think the RFP will really tell us, I think, part of the process. I understand what you're going.
I agree, it's a troubling year, but if any organization or company is interested in this, or us, they'll say, hey, can you stay out for another year? Then it's a, absolutely, it's all the way it is, keep going, but say, yeah, absolutely, well, we're going to raise our fee on our D.
Well, Mr. Man, there are some additional requirements this year. There is a GAZB requirement that we have to implement this year, which they will assist us with. Also, there is federal funding that they have additional requirements on auditing.
Any other comments or discussion? And this contract extension is going to be in regular business? And lastly, you mentioned earlier in the meeting, Jeff, the summer school?
Sorry, yes, Mr. Q, an opportunity to give a quick summary of the summer school program. It's really coming together nicely, and we do have a high interest.
Just a quick summary. We put an initial survey out to all of our district families with children currently in kindergarten through eighth grade, to see the interest in participating in a four-week career-based education summer school program. The survey closed on May 3rd. The concern was that we only had a 48.9% participation. So we were a little nervous, 51% of our parents didn't respond to the survey, and we had to staff this program, which is a tremendous challenge right now. And once we got the ball rolling, we were afraid that we'd have a lot of parents that said, well, I wasn't aware, and that number would increase. So we decided to send out a second survey that went out to just the parents that did not respond to the first survey. And that survey is listed within the document that was shared. And that survey closed on Friday, May 21st, so the numbers that were in that posted report are a little bit different. I have that breakdown of students, and again, the surveys enclosed, we were very clear in our description of what the summer school program would be, that it was going to be the K-5 focus, K going to grade one, grade one going to grade two, and so on, that that K-5 focus would be ELA and mathematics and that social-emotional component. And in the grades six through eight, it was the four core content areas, and again, the social-emotional learning component. There was an internal posting in the district for a school principal, as well as a posting for general ed teachers to staff our summer school program. There was one applicant for the principal position, internal candidate with the administrative There were 16 internal candidates that posted to work summer school, six of those candidates also applied for the extended school year program. So we really had 10, 10 people apply, and we really are looking at probably 20 to 29 sections for summer school for K-8, so we have an external posting that's out currently. In regards to Columbia High School, they will run their traditional Apex program, and typically each year they see 50 to 80 students that participate in that Apex program. What is new is the, their summer enrichment program, which the goal for the high school is to bring 120 students, grades nine through 12, in for that summer school enrichment program. And again, that'll focus on the four core areas plus the arts, and it will also have that social-emotional learning component. So we posted for a school social worker for each one of those programs, some teaching assistants to help logistically. What we are going to do is the time for the K program will be 45 to 11:45 as the instructional day, that'll allow the kids that participated in the extended 12-year, 12-month program to commit to school, to get settled in their classrooms, and then we'll stagger that arrival and dismissal so we're not overlapping logistically. We are funding as much of this program as we can through Questar so that we get the aid that we can get on it. There is a collaboration piece for our teachers, which is really powerful. The workday for our teachers will be a four-hour workday Tuesday through Friday. Mondays will be a five-hour workday because they'll have one hour in the afternoon for collaboration with other teachers, and they'll really dig into those standards, what are those critical concepts, what are those critical standards that really need to get addressed during the summer to bring kids up to speed and get them, give a little boost for the upcoming school year. The social-emotional learning component, we want to do some universal, meaning that we want our social workers to push in to these sections and do some universal social-emotional learning work with our students, and we'll also continue with any kind of support services that are small group or individual as well. We are looking at those students that have been remote all year to help transition them back into the building. In order to participate in the Questar program, we need at least one student to participate in Questar's remote summer school program, so they can either participate in the grades nine through 12 Apex Credit Recovery remotely, or they could participate in grades three through 12 remote summer school program. So we're working on the next steps. If we get an approval for our summer school principal, I will work with our summer school principal to get a more formal communication out to the parents that stated they are interested in having their child participate, and try to get a real firm commitment that the students are going to participate, because that will drive our staffing. Questions?
Questions or comments on summer school? We'd like to, the staffing piece, and a lot of districts that are running summer school, and I think it's nice, it's challenging, you know, we're running our own student's school year program, but several of our kids do, and it's challenging to even get existing staff to go to work this summer because of what happened over the past 15 months. Moving on, any more comments? Moving on to regular business, the district voting results, very pleased about those. Any one I had, Jeff, or then?
No, I just want to thank the community for their outpouring of support. Positive vote result, 87%.
Positive vote result, 87% on the budget, 88% on the transportation purchases. And I want to thank the board members who ran for the board again. And I want to thank our new board member from the community for being willing to serve on a voluntary basis, which I, in a really great capacity as a school board member. So look forward to continuing to work with the board members. And again, I thank the community for the overall great result on our budget vote. And I want to specifically thank Linda Wager for all of her work on the preparation of the budget and the preparation of the vote day, which is always under recognition.
Excellent. Any, any other comments regarding the budget vote results?
Mr. Piono, could I just add to that? There's a, there's a couple of people too that I'd like to recognize, and that is, I'd like to publicly thank our election workers. There are many that have returned year after year, and we had a lot of new people this year, so they really helped make things go smooth. Maura Chris-Bellik is our vote chairperson, and she really does oversee the day, and she does an excellent job of that. I have to mention, special thanks to Jiki Panburn, our district clerk and my secretary, as well as Stephanie Jorgensen, Mr. Seifert's secretary. They really were my two right-hand people this year and really helped me coordinate and, and make sure things ran smoothly. So I do appreciate their, their efforts as well.
Thank you, Linda. I just want to say, too, to thank the community for the support, the board. Try to find a very strong budget that supports kids in, in learning and achieving the, the goal of addressing academic gaps that may occur with the pandemic. And being in person, it was good to see. It turned out with a little laryngitis, but we, we really want to thank the community for coming out, those who came out and voted in support of the budget. We really appreciate it. Have a lot of things planned for the next year. With that, I need a motion to approve the results. Frank, second. Michelle, those in favor? Approved. For a little program for residents, children with disabilities, any questions or comments there? Seeing none, need a motion to approve that. Jennifer, second. Joanne, those in favor? Approved. We have the school bus accident first reading policy. I'll let the changes take.
The policy committee met to review, recommended, recommendation for a new policy related to bus accidents. Historically, there've been procedures in place to ensure that students and anybody on the bus is evaluated for potential injury. There was a need to clarify what those procedures were. At one time, I think there was an expectation that school nurses could respond to the scene of an accident. That's very, that creates a liability during the school day when those nurses are serving children and in the buildings. So we decided that with consultation with the police department, OCS Health and Safety, Mr. Tucker, who serves in a safety capacity, and our administrative team, that we would, and Mark Noah, that we would require emergency services to be called in every instance. The original draft of the policy that was put together, and that bottom graph was also instrumental in helping us to put this together, indicated that if there was one student on the bus, we should still call EMS. Mrs. Taylor, being conscientious, indicated that she preferred the draft to say, even if there isn't a student on the bus, that we should call EMS to come and make an assessment of the driver. So we concluded that change, which was a good one. And we have everything spelled out in policy and regulation and procedures now, so there should be no confusion.
Very good. Any questions on the policy first read? If you do, get those to, to Jeff and the committee, and then we'll, we'll move that to second reading in the next meeting. Next item is the Bonadieo contract extension that Linda mentioned during the discussion. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? Michelle, second. John, those in favor? Was posed. Seeing? Approved. The next is the engagement letter. Any questions or comments on the engagement letter? Linda, this is the distinction between engagement letter and, just spells out the terms.
Yes, the engagement letter spells out from the auditors exactly what their objectives are and the, their procedures, monitoring our, taking a look at our internal controls and testing those controls, as well as taking a look at our estimates that we make as far as pension liabilities. And we have an actuarial service that helps us with that. We also make estimates on our depreciation and the life of our equipment, those types of things. That's what the engagement letter talks about and how they'll perform their audit.
Any questions for Linda? Seeing none, need a motion to approve the, the resolution for the engagement letter? Michelle, second. Jennifer, those in favor? Was posed. Approved. Next, we have our committee reports. Marissa?
Yes, Sabina. Our committee's meeting met on May 6th and also on May 11th. At our May 11th meeting, we spoke about a draft compensation matrix. And myself, Mr. McHugh, and Mrs. Taylor provided the EGTA with a draft matrix that was within the budgeted parameters of approximately $188,000. We reviewed that matrix as a committee together. EGTA had provided their input and they were looking at a compensation matrix of around $217,000, which is about $30,000 outside of the budget. We refocused our attention at that meeting specifically regarding the charge of the committee and what we have been tasked with, which is staying within those budgeted parameters and making sure we have an equitable distribution of funds fairly done. I had asked the EGTA to take another look at their cost structure, which they agreed to, and they provided us with their update on the 20th. We most recently met on Monday, May 24th as a committee, and it was a very positive meeting. Both Mr. Romanowski and Mrs. Hodger took a very fair attempt at drafting a cost matrix. And right now, we are very close to being within the budgeted parameters. We're only about $4,000 apart. We spoke about some suggestions on where we could get into the budgeted parameters, and the only other thing on the table right now for continued discussions are unpaid clubs. And we will be meeting again on June 10th. Does anyone have any questions regarding the committee minutes?
No? No question? Thank you, Marissa. Appreciate your work on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're close.
We're close.
Okay. Before the end of the year?
Before the end of the year.
Here's Rose. Okay. Thank you very much. Linda?
Thank you. The finance and audit committee met on May 13th, and that, the purpose of that was to review the engagement letter with our independent auditors. We went through, as I said earlier, auditor responsibilities, our management responsibilities, and how the audit will be conducted and when it will be conducted, which is the third week in August. And we also had our internal auditor, Michael Wolf, present at the meeting. He will be beginning his risk assessment, actually tomorrow. He'll be here tomorrow and Friday, and he'll hopefully be back in June to, to finish that work. And just finally, I wanted to recognize Mrs. Alyssa Blaustein, who has been a member of the finance noncommittee meeting since 2014. And she'll be stepping away after this year as her son is graduating from Columbia High School, so she'll be moving on to other things. But she has really been a main contributor to our committee for a few years now.
Linda, any questions for Linda? Nope? Very good. Thanks, Linda. Jim, you have several items on your committee list here?
I will spare you professional development, then on May 3rd, there is the 2021, 22 professional development plan, that will be on the June 9th, Board Agenda for Superintendent's Report Discussion Item. CCS met on May 5th. Special Education and Related Services Program Review was presented. That will probably come to the board at some point in July. The Education Committee met on May 10th. We had a very rich discussion regarding our graduation rate and looking at our non-completers over the last five years. That data is fast as well. Any questions?
A lot of great information in the analysis, the graduation.
The boss keeps me busy.
Well, sometimes the way you characterize things, Mr. McHugh, is not exactly the way I did it. Mr. McHugh did an extensive dropout analysis. I just want to talk about it a little bit. When we looked at our graduation rate, I actually exceeded expectations because I challenged Mr. McHugh to look at it kid by kid. Who were the kids that dropped out over the last five cohorts? What was the profile of those kids? What were some of the issues that they were challenged by? And I wanted to know. And Jim went even further than that and did an extensive review so that we could see some of the characteristics of the kids and what happens in some cases. So, and what some of the challenges. So we could do a better job of intervening at various stages as we follow the kids up in track. So Jim did a super job at that. The way he presented it to the committee must, I didn't quite say the numbers aren't good enough, but I do appreciate your advocacy for the kids and looking at what we can do to prevent dropouts.
Jim, I have to say, that was excellent. The analysis was great. Do we see changes in how we handle things policy-wise, like, like Jeff said, on trying to help prevent? I see 10th graders a big dropout period. Like, could we focus a little bit on the 10th graders and see what we could do to help stop that? I, you know, I don't know what kind of ideas we have for maybe future.
Well, you know, it was just a, right, first you present the data, let people digest it a little bit, respond to it. It's sensitive a little bit because we own that data, we have a 97% graduation rate. So there's a lot of positives to focus on and a lot of success stories. And I can tell you that our faculty and our support services, they go above and beyond. There were some interesting trends that I just will speak to briefly. A lot of those students, when we looked at our 38 students that weren't, that did not complete, interesting enough, there was just shy of a half dozen students that were academically performing excellent. They were the A student, high flyer, and all of a sudden, the typical trend of attendance, chronic absenteeism, and they just fall off. So those are students that wouldn't identify and present as an at-risk student for any other reason. There was no behavior problem, there was nothing on the radar, high flyers, that they just stopped. So open up a huge discussion. Just for example, this school year dealing with COVID pandemic has been a tremendous challenge. But is there, is there a need for a, a student that may be able to get through that time with a, with a remote format, even past the COVID pandemic? What I will say is we do a really good job in our high school, especially does a great job getting kids in the right program. There were several cases where the students were placed in an alternate education program, for example, C-Tat, and they, and it was a complete turnaround. They went from failing multiple courses to passing all of their courses and then refused the placement, and then things went south. There's a large number of students that are transients, meaning that they enter our district, maybe in the middle school or the high school. And, you know, what I really did was I, I kind of did a biography on each one of those students and collected as much data, even if they were ours from kindergarten, as much data as I could find on them. But, you know, there's a situation, there's several situations where students were having really challenging issues in another district, whether it was their social circle, whether they became disengaged and elasged, ever, parents relocated to another school district, enrolled, try to give them a fresh start. A lot of times that hope is just too big for a student to get out of. They just, they lose that hope, and that's a problem, problem. So I want to emphasize the fact that a 97% graduation rate, I'll go on record saying this, would not be where it is without C-Tat, without Operation Graduation, without Columbia's Alternative Program, without MAP, without Jump Start, and without, you know, faculty and administration going the extra mile for kids. We've, we've provided tutoring to students during this time to bridge that gap. Are there things that we can do to improve? There are. It's a sensitive subject because when you talk about the non-completers over five years being 38, people aren't hearing all the success stories. Some of the kids that walked across that graduation stage, graduated because of the extra effort. So it was that initial presentation of the data that people, you know, look at it for a little while and think about it and then pick up that discussion again. Because there, there are things, and those are the things that we're looking at right now, like, for example, expanding MAP down to grade six. It is those transitional years where students really struggle, elementary to the middle school, middle school to the high school. So those are things that we're looking at currently to put in place for next year.
Yeah, I think it's really important to distinguish the graduation rates and to, I mean, you look at every trend, your work right on top, you know, which is pretty amazing.
Yeah, I felt like a black rain cloud at Education Committee because I presented that data and, and, you know, it's, it's hard when it's right in front of you, right? But, you know, the fact that some students aren't even on our radar, that just high flyers academically, not presenting, having any issues at all, but for some reason, you know, stopped coming to the school. If you dig a little deeper, there's some mental health concerns in there. So, you know, we've made a, we've made a tremendous effort to, to really provide that professional development and really talk about some things that are difficult to talk about. But every student matters and, you know, Mr. Sung stood hold me to task to really take a deep look at that. So those are all great questions and it's a great discussion.
The truth is, I mentioned an issue and Jim takes it. That runs with it, which is a great thing. It does a great job with us. And I appreciate the effort, I'm grateful. Because we can, we can do things, Michelle, that focus on some of those difficult transition years. We can develop a system to track those kids as they move from elementary to middle school to high school, to have those indicators that early on they might be in jeopardy of not graduating. That's the next conversation that Jim says we're gonna, we're gonna have with folks now that we, just, just real quick, one thing that came right out of that is when we have a new student that transfers in, we talked about a mentor. We talked about, you know, making sure that we're checking on that student that transitioned in, right? Instantly giving them that trusted adult and establishing that connection in school to help monitor that student's transition in our district. So that's an instant, that, that's an instant doable.
I think as we, as the team works together, we, we as a board get together for board retreat, discussion about our goals, objectives, and scorecard, meeting those conversations in to make sure that this kind of data, we love to see more conversations about this at the board level so the community can hear more about it, aside from just the Education Committee, some comments, the committee level, because it is so important about the success stories and all the efforts that we make to not only provide, you can say what Questar was here, the opportunities for, for programs, and it's also the opportunities for children and families who struggle and get them back in the trap. It's those, destined to those programs to get them across the fish line so they can be successful as well. Thank you, Mike. Next committee report. Jeff?
I'm gonna be giving a general overview, brief overview. Our committee on global education has met recently. This is a committee that is focused on diversity, inclusion, and equity. We've been meeting for over a year and a half now or so. Recently, the State Education Department came out with a policy document and a toolkit and guidance, resource guide related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We discussed that within our committee. The way that that document is organized from the state level is very similar to the way we organize our planning within our committee. So the committee has agreed to use the state's resources to develop a written plan. We're focusing on areas of professional development. We have a number of opportunities that are coming up next year, as well have been offered online this year. We're also looking at ways that we can assess our curriculum to make sure that we are avoiding any type of bias within our curriculum. Additionally, we are looking at ways that we can welcome families that are new to the district through an ambassador program. And we've identified people And we've identified people within each building who can serve in those roles, so if a new family moves in, is something they're familiar with, the screen brush, that would help them transition to know how to access information, who to go to within the school district, but also within the community. So that committee is continuing to work. There's a book study currently happening among some group of that committee. One of the ideas that flowed out of that meeting came from John, and I don't know if you want to speak to it, but we're looking to revamp our website under the area of community and to really have a community resources website, so you can go on the district website and you know where to go for what in the capital region and have it be more reflective of the diversity of the resources that are available here. And it's something that I've talked to Mark Adam about, and he's working on that behind the scenes.
Just to add to that, one of the things that we talked about at that level was the school districts, and especially in this region, is five towns. So we are the center of a lot of activity and we're attracting a lot of people, the businesses from all over, and we kind of assume that people, when you go to register your kid for school, it's a very sterile process, and we wanted to make it a more personal process so that use our website and our tools to not only give people information that you don't have to really search for, and also identify resources to help people transition into the community, whether it be language resources, which is a really big thing right now. And it doesn't have to mean we refer them to the district for a language resource, but there might be a community group. And I always think of one particular group of students my wife had, they were Ukrainian, and there was three girls that came at high school level and they spoke no English. And it was through the resources of an Ukrainian church and co-host, through an employee, that we got them plugged into people that they could communicate with, and we could also identify with translators and different things like that. And I just, in our conversation, a lot of times, the focus is what is different about people, but using our resources to what is our real common interest. And our common interest is students and families and success. And I think it's a great project overall.
Thank you, Jeff. We're also working on policies and procedures. Marissa's the chair of that group, and they're looking at ways to make sure that the code of conduct is inclusive and uses appropriate references. I'll talk about that.
So our Code of Conduct Committee met last week, and Joyanne Taylor and Jennifer Meassey were on that committee meeting. It was very positive, especially with our two student representatives. They were very happy to see that we are going to be adding inclusive language and collaboration language within that code of conduct to make sure that all, you know, ethnic groups and all of our diverse employees and our students and our community members are reflected within that code.
Thank you. We also have been meeting with our district's advocacy committee, but we've expanded participation in that committee to, for the last two meetings, we have invited representatives from other districts, superintendents, and Questar representatives, because we are planning a very important advocacy forum, which will be a regional effort on June 2nd from 7:30 to 9:00. It will be a virtual forum focused on school, full school opening in September. Mark Adam has worked with me to put together a very apprehensive schedule for that evening. We've consulted with Dan Sherman from OCS, who's the director of communications. We have representatives from more than just our district assigned to speaking roles, including two students from our district, a board member from another district, myself, Dr. Cruz, and we're trying to communicate the need for all of the kids to be back full-time and for us to have the guidance now of how they want us to accomplish that. We've invited all of our state elected representatives. We've heard that from somebody, Jake Ashby, who was the first to respond. The commissioner of education, Betty Rosa, has committed to attending that as one of the panelists. We've invited the county executives of the respective counties within Questar to attend as well, so they can hear the dialogue. And we think it will be a very informative program. All of the parents, students, community members are welcome to attend it because it's virtual. You can attend it through the live stream. And again, we're hoping that that will lead to, what the governor said this week, that he would anticipate that schools would be fully open. That's a good sign, but we want to make sure that we know that's going to happen for sure, and we want to be able to put our plans together based on whatever guidance we need to be ready in September. And so I think it will be an overall team effort on the part of our component districts within Questar. We sent out an invitation to the parents this week, and we'll be sending reminders out, and I will be calling our elected representatives who haven't responded yet, to make sure that they're aware of it and hopefully that they can attend. Safety Committee met on May 14th. We talked about the climate survey that was done. We want to present that survey to the board likely at our last meeting in June, so that the public is aware that while we did the survey in the fall, we did look at the results, studied the results through the Safety Committee, and we are very pleased with the results, but we will also have some goals and objectives for further improvement that we'll present to the board on June 23rd. And I think that covers all my conclusions.
Any questions for Jeff? Jennifer?
Any update on the presentation to the county legislature on the bus?
Yes.
Did that cross out?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to defer to Mark on that. Let's mark organize that.
Thank you. We did have a very good meeting with the majority of the county legislatures. We're on the virtual meeting, as well as representatives from Towne B. Screen Bush and the Screen Bush Police Department, so Jeff, Mark Noeth. So it worked out very well. The county was very supportive of it. They've actually drafted up county law already, you know, legislation that they shared with Kelly Hoffman and Tom Grant were really taking the leads on it, and they asked some questions to the company. They were answered. We asked some questions, Jeff asked some questions, Jack Conway from Towne asked some questions, and all the answers were provided. Everybody was pretty happy, pretty satisfied with the program, with the services, what they offer, so hopefully we'll hear from the county here. I ended it with saying that the ball's in their court, you know, that district who was interested, Towne B. Screen Bush Police Department is interested in it, the ball's in the county's court. So I actually emailed them tonight saying, hey, that's your joining in, what's your next process now? So you can say a topic. I know Jeff is going to send a letter.
Yes.
Jeff Conway is going to send a letter to the legislators saying, hey, we support this, you know, let's move forward. It seemed pretty well.
Thanks, Mark. Any other comments or questions? Any committees? Very good. Next item is table motions. I don't have anything this time. All business, board members? Moving on to the consent agenda. Item A through I, any questions or comments regarding those agenda, those consent agenda items? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Joanne, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. No addendums? Any new business, board members? Moving to our second public forum. Linda, do we have any recommendations? Thank you. Our second board forum. I'll start my break with Frank. Anything?
No.
Joanne?
Mark?
John?
Good.
Michelle?
Good.
Jennifer?
Thank you.
I don't have anything. Just again, want to thank the committee for the support of the budget. Looking forward to the next few weeks as there's a lot of activities for our students and families. Looking forward to a successful elevations and graduation, participating in those activities as well. With that, we do need an executive session for purposes of personnel, actual items. We don't just need a board business executive session, so I need a motion to approve going into executive session. Michelle, second. Frank, those in favor? All right. Want to thank everyone in the virtual world for attending, and we'll see you next quarter. Thank you.